This conference will now be recorded.
Yes, yours?
Yeah, this.
I give the money share. Someone to get a nice share if you want.
Don't let them buy you off without a charge.
Who's mine, who off? Alright, we call it order of honorary slackboard at six oh two on December tenth. We have every, all three members present here in town hall. And the first letter business is the tanker truck contract. And we have a couple of fire items, but we'll start off with.
You're telling everyone if we can get through that or not?
The letter a million dollars?
Yeah.
Seven million dollar question.
But the way I read this, Sean, are they're not looking for the whole deposit. You know, it's just right here.
Correct, yes.
So what is the money kind of set up? Usually, you know, if I'm fifty percent down, you give me fifty percent down of it.
I think they give you the option to, I don't find out exactly, but years past the trucks that we've built, it's going to one lump sum at the end.
Oh, really? That's good, I'm not, I'm not.
I think they're willing to work with us, so if you wanna put some of it towards the truck to, whatever, make your financials look better, worse.
I don't know. Going back, what is the timetable for getting this turned down?
They said twenty eight.
We have twenty eight months in there.
No, but that's the twenty eighth of, we're forgetting the contract.
If you sign it tonight, he's gonna start pre-con and we have a scheduled meeting Monday morning at eight, so.
But what I would like, I would like to go on a thought, really, really knowledge. Yeah. You know, it's, when you spend, in my opinion, when you spend that kind of money, you just wanna buy it to give you smarts, you know.
I just think, like, we've bought so many things this way, like, I see your point.
Yeah, but I mean, the thing about, if I, you know, the good thing, I think the law firm we had, just like, you know, sent it out tonight, guess you give me the military, I'd be, I would do it, but I think when you spend a hundred million dollars, I have a, I would want to have someone legally check it.
My only question about the price, is there, that doesn't include the trade-in?
That does not include the truck.
Would they be able to take the trade-in in this document out, or is that, I mean, I guess our truck could look different in.
Yeah. Yeah, they're not gonna commit to a number, they're committing to a range.
Yeah, well, I can't.
Because it's.
Yeah, guy knows it's slash week in the job, he's not gonna worry about that trade-in here.
So when would they?
Not for a minute, it could be upside down the day before they come.
Hopefully that never happens.
So when would they, when would they come up and make that evaluation, like, before we, before we pick it up, or after we pick it up?
Yeah, when we're getting close to being delivered.
He says you have to, that's, you have to go out there.
Probably gonna do multiple inspection time.
Yeah, because it's in here in the contract somewhere, that you have to expect an X amount a day when you're excepted, whether or whatever, you know, inclusion. That's not on.
Yeah, both of us.
They have. I'd say that if we're agreed that we wish to sign the contract unless there's a problem, we could send it to the lawyers and then.
I, I don't have a problem.
Come and sign it, we wouldn't necessarily have to come back unless it was an issue.
Right, what I, we could sign it and have a lawyer hold it, you know, I could, I'll send it to Chris or Donovan, I'd say, can you look at this? And then, you know.
If there's a problem.
There is a problem, you know. But I suspect they've done, dealt with so many municipalities, there's not gonna be a problem. So I just, you know.
The only thing I don't know is about the, the additional like twenty five thousand, because we don't have authorization for it. We can't really say that we have it.
Yeah.
Because we have authorization for a million fifty. If, if it was gonna come within like a year, we could put ARPA money towards it, but we have to spend ARPA money by the end of twenty twenty six. So if it doesn't come till twenty twenty seven.
Yeah, because drop it as fast as possible.
I don't, usually the way that it works is we take all, all the money all at once when we get the vehicle. That's how it, I've never been when we bought this big of a vehicle, but for the other ones, no one has, right? This is like.
I'm not really proud to be part of it.
But, but usually with most of our vehicles, when we, when we get the vehicle, that's when we take out the loan, but that's when we take out the loan.
Yeah.
So if we don't, we won't take out any money on this until it's basically in our hands.
But in the meantime, we have you at a position for another twenty plus.
Yeah, but then we also talked about giving me things to put on it.
Well, that we can deal with when we get closer.
But that, that one, that extra twenty four that you're talking about.
Yeah.
Right, it could be offset by trade-in.
I agree, so I just.
You're right. It should, we just need to be aware of the work of additional money.
I just wanna cross our Ts and dot our Is because it's over a million dollars. And, and I, that's why I mentioned trade-in, because I assume that trade-in's gonna be worth more than twenty five thousand dollars.
It better be, yeah.
You're right.
With inflation, it might be worth.
Show me the money.
Yeah.
But, and like I said, we actually have ARPA money that kind of just freed up because of another unfortunate oversight. And we could just take that and put it towards this truck, because we were, we were looking for a truck to put it towards. My only concern is if it's estimated twenty eight months, we have to spend that by the end of twenty twenty six. So that's the problem there.
What's the issue?
The.
Quick issue.
So we got approved for a million and fifty thousand, and this is a million and seventy five, seventy four. And technically, I don't know, although that's pennies in the grand scheme of things, I don't know if we can technically sign off saying, yeah, we have that money. Don't quite, even though like, if we could somehow get them to agree that the trade-in will be at least twenty four. At the very least. Or we could put.
I, I think.
I can call right now.
Yeah.
He's already texted me to, did we have any questions?
Yeah, I mean, basically, that's it, is, I'm, that's my only hesitation, is, is there any way for?
So you're saying with all ARPA money, you can't put a down payment? It has to be a contract, right?
But we wouldn't pay it until after.
After they, yes.
Yes, we could potentially.
You should call it earnest money, couldn't you?
Call it.
The only, the only.
We might be able to, I just know that usually how it works with all of our trucks is we pay when we deliver. And part of this is that it's a borrowing, so what's not even happening is we're not gonna pay when we, we're gonna go borrow a million and fifty thousand dollars. And if they go to borrow it, and they realize a million and seventy thousand, and they never got authorization to do that.
Couldn't we, uh, sign the contract today, missing, like I said, if we pay it all at once, I don't know if they get a little bit.
Well, we'd have to.
We could, we could just put it on a,
We could put it on mutual.
On the next time.
Right.
Two years.
Yeah.
It'll be on another will.
Right. I think like Frank said, we could probably sign it, hold on to it to get, to get the go-ahead debt, that's okay, and then hand it over.
I see what you mean.
Which I think is, makes sense.
We, we literally have a minimum of two more town meetings before we get to deliver probably three, if we have a November meeting this year.
It's in porch of fires, the longer we wait.
Yeah.
No, I, I think we did, that's a tough.
It's like.
Question is probably to do that.
And I, it's almost, even though we haven't done it before, we also haven't had the pool of money to do it with. Um, to do like a down payment, it's a little awkward, I, I don't know what their history is, but what would happen if the project fell through? Normally, there would be no money changing hands until the end of the project, what happens to that money if we give it to a deposit and for some reason, something happens? I would hope that that wouldn't happen, but I know, yeah, it said it brought back once before, right? Or refused to return. I thought, maybe it wasn't, I was thinking it was time to start up.
One of the highly trucks broke down a couple times at the beginning, one of them, two times. Yeah, but I don't know if that's what still.
Somebody actually returned, but I think it might.
Well, we, yeah, we have a, absolutely.
They delivered.
They had to go back, rebuild.
It was a massive. Right.
But now they're happy.
That was a, that was not a they're happy, that was a whoo, whoo, whoo. Okay.
Now they like, they like the truck.
Okay.
The truck is performing.
Okay, so now it's.
Maybe they're not happy to be coming in.
Um, so.
Okay, question, we filled out all the, talk about the perception and.
Well, I have to talk to, which part, we'd say?
You got that, yeah, sure. Federal life-size pack, exception thirty.
There's a certificate.
Certificate.
Might have to talk to the treasurer. We have, we have, we have accidental certificate. Yeah, we have, we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have it all, yeah.
So we just.
Yeah, I mean, and one of those W five, spring it in, I guess, but.
Seventy four number is with the trade-in. But at least it's clear.
Yeah. We had clarity, yes.
But he doesn't itemize how much he's given it, or how much you get from?
Sure, we can get it from him if you would like.
Yeah, because we'll need something for the books.
Well, I see, there's a trade-in discount on.
With the trade-in value.
It says the trade-in discount reflected above.
Maybe I, reflected above the kind of, this.
Yeah.
Does that theoretically mean that the price could go up? Cause he's, cause like it says, any damage that occurs after signing of this will result in reappraisal of Montrier Fire Department's two thousand two K tanker.
Yeah, I mean.
Just if, yeah, it's hold the truck.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, exactly. That's better than taking pictures of what you have now, that way.
Yeah, well, I'm not saying is it, is it reference, it's like a trade-in discount in amendments to the contract, but nothing in here. So I don't know if they didn't include it, or just assume, because that would be the difference, that would make things a lot simpler. But. Tuesdays, next Tuesday. I don't know also if it can be a bargaining chip. We got a million and fifty thousand dollars approved, ready to go, we'll sign it, right, now. That any, even a thousand extra dollars is just that much more, like, oh, where's it coming from, we gotta go to a town meeting, we don't have it yet. But yeah, it's, it's hard. I thought the trade-in might be the, might be the key to get it down, but it's already included.
Yep. But the problem is if we wait for a town meeting, it's gonna be fifty instead of twenty five.
I don't know also if we can pull money from the fire, if there's possible, like money from fire department, like equipment maintenance budget, I don't know.
At that time, when that money, when the time comes for payment, so true?
Well, to say that we have the money.
I'm not seeing where there's anything about the trade-in here.
If you, if you look through it, it's all six.
Six.
Yeah. Contract amendments, it's actually not in the contract, it's in the contract amendments.
What, um, what's the issue with the engine clause, with the, so with the pre twenty twenty seven engine issue, what is that?
They're trying to, they're trying to get one of the old motors, but if the new motor doesn't. There's a deadline that they need to make in old mode, and this is like on the threshold of whether it'll make it or not. Then there's also, Cummins is also not producing.
You're not.
And also the new presidential people.
Yeah.
There's a chance that this thing just gets mixed anyways, that new motor.
Yeah, so about it, the different emissions.
Because if there, if it's possible that emissions required, they just get thrown out, as opposed to.
You'll, yeah, you'll get to use the.
I, I get you. And we're kind of.
Free emissions, but the last emissions.
Yeah. And we're just in that weird spot.
Where we're weird.
Where, yeah, I.
I think they're, they're being told they have to do this, and I don't think Cummins is ready to do this, so. Yeah, there's so little information on these motors, that it's like getting shut down, everybody, even Boltwood, Kami, and all the electric, just, there's no information on it. So you will, like, the.
I mean, the only other thing I think we've ever been worried about, that distracting money, like, would be to use the ARPA money, is it down payment?
We can look into it.
I mean, do we wanna ask council about that?
Well, I think we should ask council.
It's definitely a little bit of a different thing, but we can, we can look into it, hopefully they get a little appraisal for one week, but ideally, I'm assuming.
Ideally, though, you guys might come back and say they agreed to a thousand, a million fifty.
We can, we can try it.
Yeah. Ideally, I mean.
I mean, that's what we got off.
Tanker.
It's generally not much.
Should they put a paragraph in here that they have standing up this time, the town has authority to be willing to fifty thousand, the town will see, get the reference on two down, that the reference.
Well, I think, let's do, over the next week.
Yeah, it's a paragraph, it's, it covers all bases.
Let's see if for some reason they do wanna come down, we won't like that. And then if not, we'll look into, can we use ARPA, uh, to cover the difference? Um, or some other funding source, or say, we're gonna do it at, at another town meeting. It shouldn't, shouldn't take, I don't think, more than a few days to answer those questions, because they're fairly straightforward, but we can answer them now.
I don't really see option four, especially if this already includes. If this already includes the frame down, I don't really see another way to make a difference, but we're currently authorized for it.
The one thing I think I would give clarification, what is this? Because if they come back and say, I didn't, but else, what's only five thousand, then they'll say, well, it's only one, why? They're gonna be lucky to have that, you know, that's something to understand, that value. They had, they had to do the math.
I don't disagree with that.
They had to do the math.
I'm a little late.
Yeah.
Let's do a technical question.
Yeah. We'll get, we'll figure out.
So we'll get the legal question, you guys will tell them what the issue is, and see if you can get an actual number of the trade-in values.
Do you remember how much this, the current two thousand two tanker cost you, which is, say, twenty nine?
Four twenty five. Total, we're four twenty five, that was with air packs and homes and all, so I don't. It was like three seventy five.
In twenty years.
But they, they hung on, they were like, well, it's six, six hundreds, not that long ago, so it's COVID, we're talking. Five to six hundreds, yeah.
I know, there's gonna be a trade war.
All right. Moving on, we got the fire station lease.
Did you print out the word?
Yep.
The game is for you, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
I'm not signing it, no.
So which one, you guys to sign it?
Oh, Susan.
That's the letter, that's the letter.
There's a letter, and then with green spaces, that's the contract.
There was a little spot for my name, so I'm scared.
No, just so you know, and you may, you probably know, but State Ethics told me three or four years, three and a half years ago, to not negotiate on the lease, because if for some reason it fell through, and we used other firefighters, my job, and my father's job, and, and it's in danger. And Ethics complains at the time, we're flying left and right, so I followed their advice.
So I guess my one question with that, and it's not a biggie, but Susan, it might be hard, our fiscal years are off.
Why are you making this work, Simon?
I just, this date on it is July third.
Should in the future, should we start working on a new one, get this one done, just sign this, and start working on a new one, so we have a new, say, contract coming up.
In actually July, we're signing it, so.
For the budget kind.
Yeah, that's what we.
Your budget that's coming up.
Yes.
Be having one figured out, try to get into that cycle.
Yes, we sure, I, far as the options, you know, we have a promise or a condo, I think it's gonna be what's the, I don't know.
So we're not talking numbers now, for a lot of this, just.
There's only one place to sign, right? For the contract.
Okay, that's good. Susan goes to jail, I think. Did you read all the sign for it, Susan, I put in there?
I actually did read the entire.
No, I don't know. I'll read chapter.
It was reasonably straightforward, but I did have to look up the word demise, because my understanding of the word demise is that if someone has passed, but it turns out it is to give away the property. Now, so, or I guess, or rent, I didn't know that, demise, the demise, I'm like, what now? See, I do actually read.
I think, Justin, we put a place on this one sign that covered it. It's not contract.
Yeah.
He doesn't want, he's not being involved in it.
It's, and beyond that, it certainly doesn't appear, but, I mean, I'm on the fire company, I'm a fire department.
Plus, wow.
At this rate, you know, in one or two more years now, with John Field and Southern Berkshire Annals, I just will come to meetings and refuse myself to meet.
Bed farm, Berkshire Annals, to fire company, fly bird. Oh, you can go up to the fight. So why we got both of these here attached, started to be good, buttering that car?
That's, that's, we have a thank you.
So in what, cut you off, with the lease discussion, um, to put together some kitchen numbers, for that ninety thousand, start using that up, we got the asphalt bill coming in, they're gonna put together today.
Yeah.
Not sure if that happened or not.
You guys were working on the apron.
Yeah, we did, because we're running, we had to do it.
No, no, yay.
Asphalt plant exploded Thanksgiving.
Okay, so you.
And we actually got, we all dug it out.
Oh, what?
Sent title into the asphalt plant, it explodes. And we ended up going to Hudson.
Recently, that's when he drove up and it was closed.
And they, they had advertised and told the contractors that they opened for Thanksgiving, whether they have breakdown or something, they said, no, they're, they're down.
But it got done.
So made us sweat for a minute.
So I'll make a copy of this and send this to you, that this is a better appreciation, they put in that fire, and, and the time.
Yes, that was amazing.
Some experience, huh?
Some experience, yeah.
Did you guys, like, it was mostly digging fire breaks and assessing the situation, just hard work, but not actually in the fire?
We worked right up against the fire line.
Yeah.
Nonverbal path, like.
I wasn't sure how far back you did it.
Some of them were right on.
We were right up to it, and all the places.
Oh, that took ten miles, or something like that, to move that, right? Lots.
Six hundred acres.
Yeah, that took ten miles.
Okay, good job riding up everything.
Will you guys please?
It's a cover.
With the way, the news handled it.
But you guys learned.
Well, you never know, sometimes you could.
We're just kinda like, over there, it's, it's right.
Oh. There were some.
We were there, but.
I was like, I know that fact, it just hit moderate fire.
But there's, is there gonna be any kind of, like, regional agreement or anything, like how a plan seven?
If Roma's off it, but. Sure, it's, it'll happen.
And then, by the way, in answer to the question, I think you probably saw me, you know, but the, the meeting was canceled, they're gonna have one in January, it happens at the date, and I didn't know what the time of the cancel meeting was, it wasn't mentioned in the, they never said, you did December meeting. But I'm on the, you know, it's, you know.
I know you have to leave at six thirty.
I don't wanna be sensitive.
I'm, I heard a text coming, coming, but, um, my, when my ride gets here.
Kitchen.
So the lease thing has a ninety thousand, they wanted to see, uh, have a breakdown thing, I came up with, uh, it'll be about twenty eight thousand.
For the kitchen?
For the kitchen, finish the kitchen. So we're gonna set up a full time twenty four seven sapping, so, for two years. So the gas, so, you put to go along, so dishwasher, a couple old same seat work tables to finish it out. A forty unit pantry for, uh, for the twenty four seven sapping, and then the company part of it. And then, there needs to be a little bit of electrical work, just what we had planned before is differing a little bit now. So that'll be for the refrigerators, and then the dishwasher to get those wired, and then, uh, we had taken the gas supply out of it, stationally, we had done renovation, now that could be brought back in. That comes to about twenty eight thousand, and now where the sales are at, when we actually purchase it.
Yeah, that's good, what about the apron, are we gonna use some of that money for the apron?
Yeah, and that was gonna be right around eight thousand. Should, should come in under that. So we, we're gonna start ordering, so.
Like an emotional, pretend AK for the portion of.
I will second.
Okay. So?
Yes?
Yes.
Wait, are we doing that AK for the asphalt too?
Yes.
Yeah, you could do that, I think.
Yes.
That'll be the first, it'll come.
Yeah, okay.
There you go.
You know how to solve. You have to go back to the one.
Yep.
So that would be, oh, you're on.
Stuction. Are we paying first, or are we submitting it to you?
No, you have to, you have to pay the fire company, you cannot pay the vendors directly, in a two center contract.
Okay.
So.
But we have to see the invoice.
You see the invoice, you write in the check for the invoice, and you write.
That was clear.
Right, well, we'll, uh, be in touch about, we got in the tanker contract, and figure out how to. Go to see the, alright, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
I, yeah, I mean, if I had known, I would have done it at five PM, we were back and forth, but, about the, about the, uh. Well, oh, well, we were, I was saying about the fire truck, I would have sent to her, but yeah, we were back and forth about the, what part of property, about the TA evaluation.
Okay.
But I'll, but I'll get to that. Next up, the Beacon contract. So, this is basically just.
It's the same one we discussed on numerous times, yes, or something different?
It's my understanding, we already had an agreement with Beacon, but this is making it official, so that accounts as obligated in terms of ARPA funds.
Gotcha, okay.
I think the other, there was some background.
I think the other, there was some back and forth about what the exact amount was left in the ARPA account. But, um, I, I don't have a complete record.
Yeah.
Beth basically does. And even what, what I had, which didn't include all the invoices that Beth had. The, the remaining amount, according to her estimate, which is part of this contract, should cover up the landfill project to the point of, you know, a, a contract with a developer to build it on the landfill. So that's, that was a surprise to me, and I'm glad to hear it. So we may, we may get to the finish line.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go through the accounts and see what's in there this week.
When you get a chance, I don't think it's crucial right now.
There's a T on the, oh, up here, yeah.
Yours is one of, the one ARPA project that counts as obligated. We, the other ones are not so lucky.
Well, I appreciate that. Okay.
We don't wanna lose them. God, it's.
You don't need anything more from me, right?
No, I think we're all set, thank you Peter.
Okay, thank you Peter, thank you.
Take care.
So, moving on to ARPA funds. That, the three sources of ARPA funds that haven't, are not fully spent down yet, but were obligated in our minds, but are not obligated in the Treasury's mind.
Historical commission.
Um, is historical commission, the community center pavilion, and, and Beacon, but Beacon.
Right.
And solar, we have a contract, so that counts as obligated. Unfortunately, I was mistaken, I thought obligated meant set towards a specific project. Obligated means you basically have to sign a contract for that amount of money. Um, or invoice. So, taking that and figuring out where do we go from here? I think what probably makes the most sense is putting the money towards the highway department truck, pickup truck that was approved at town meeting. It was approved for ninety-five thousand dollars of free cash. Um, and we have the paperwork to go along with it. When it comes to annual town meeting in May, we will have money left in that account, however many ARPA funds, if we put sixty thousand dollars of ARPA funds towards that truck, we'll have about sixty thousand dollars worth of ARPA funds room, remaining that special article account. And we can then, if we want to allocate them to the same projects, transfer them at that town meeting and say, okay, we wanna take fifty thousand dollars that was supposed to go to the community center and didn't, that is now in the, we can take it from the highway truck and put it towards that project. We can take ten thousand five hundred dollars that was supposed to go to the historical commission and didn't, and is now in the highway truck and, and move it, but it has to be at a town meeting vote. That is the, a way where we can remove funds around, so that we don't lose the ARPA funds, because if we were to close out the fiscal year and say, well, they're going towards the community center pavilion, the treasurer would come back and say, well, you don't have a signed contract, so you lose those funds. As I understand it, here. So I.
Sign it up, do you have enough to use up all the funds?
Yeah, so we had a couple of options, one was the upfilling of the highway truck. One was the fire truck, except that wouldn't really meet deadline. There was a couple of other ideas, but it was like, what's simple? And the simplest one in my mind, that made the most sense for this situation, is that ninety-five thousand dollar highway truck. Because it was just coming from free cash.
And that qualifies?
Yes.
It does, what was the total amount?
It's gonna be about sixty thousand dollars, because we had eighty-five towards the community center. And we're spending, is it thirty or thirty-three?
We might have additional numbers.
Thirty-three.
It was thirty-three for the current contract, phase two, let's say, design. And then, originally, we'd take the twenty-nine off.
Yeah.
And I had calculated sixty thousand, added to the twenty-nine from free cash.
Yeah.
That may need to change a little. Based on some numbers that we received from them.
Within the last, since we met last time, do you have new numbers?
Well, they're not new numbers, uh, it's numbers that I should have added in.
Okay.
That we think.
I messed with his numbers.
Yeah, although they're high.
Yeah.
You know, we won't know until we actually go to bid.
Right, yeah.
And so.
What, right, so we wanna make sure we ask for enough. When we, so that when we go to bid, you know, if there's enough there, we're hopefully trying, you know, wanna try to bring costs down, but we wanna make sure we've asked for enough, so that, you know, the fifty percent they'll cover.
So it comes down to, the bottom line is that it adds another thirty-six thousand to our local match. So.
I lost the thread there, so. So, try and stick with the ARPA mission.
Yeah.
We've got, it was, I don't have the sheets handy that has the numbers on it.
Yeah, I can pull it here. This is the most recent, so, the only ones that aren't spent or obligated is this ten thousand five hundred and and a portion of that eighty-five thousand, but that includes, do you know the match on the phase of, on this phase of the grant, was it thirty-three thousand?
Well, thirty-three thousand.
Well, need to.
So it's, so what we actually have remaining is the ten-five plus the, this number of less of the gray.
Yes.
Okay.
So about, um. No, about fifteen.
Fifty-two for that, so it's sixty-two five.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, okay. So it'd be sixty-two five would be applying to the truck.
Yeah, and the only reason now, of course, at this meeting tonight, we're now thinking, maybe it will go towards the fire truck. So I would have us vote to move it to this highway truck right now, that now a portion of it might go to the fire truck. So I would say let's hold off on.
And if we, if we make that decision by next Tuesday, we're still meeting December thirty, deadline, so, yeah, so I think we're okay.
Cause the, uh, the truck we have a contract for already.
How much is that truck? Would it actually have been mine, you know?
The snowplow was one twenty-nine or something.
That's what I recall.
The what?
The snowplow truck, right, that was.
Well, so the plow trucks are these days costing right around almost two hundred thousand dollars fully out, but this is the highway superintendent.
Is he giving another Chevy, C, three series?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
So, and here's another lesson on trade-ins.
We're such an education.
I want, I wanna just by trade-in, the two of the vehicles that I own personally are, they're gonna be traded in for certain price, they always give you nothing.
Yeah, they do.
So, this is the contract for the twenty twenty from Liberty Chevrolet. It's a full-size twenty-five hundred H D Chevrolet Silverado twenty twenty-four. And the number at the bottom is eighty-five thousand nine hundred and twelve. But the model year increase of fifty percent is twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty-six. Minus the trade-in for twenty thousand.
So that would take it eighty thousand, take twenty off, and that could get to.
Didn't we, didn't we actually sell on last one instead of trade-in?
Yeah, the one, the last one we did put on the twenty.
And we cut a lot more for it than we expected.
So, that was the fire, that was the rescue U con.
Oh, I meant, I thought there was also, didn't we also meet us a bit, we did, one of Jim's trucks.
We did the tractor, I know for sure.
And we got, no, there was another two, we did the tractor and I thought it was.
It's through a contract, sorry Dennis, what, yeah.
I have a, I have a Lake Carpet Worden group meeting at seven o'clock.
So we need to get to it.
So, could we table our, until, ours until next Tuesday and come back with the numbers?
Yeah, for the pavilion.
For the pavilion.
Yeah, that would be good. And if you get the numbers earlier.
Yeah, if you could do a document, just say, here, here it is before we come to the meeting.
And then he's got a deadline next Thursday to submit for this grant, sorry.
So do we, in this letter, need to say we have all of the match money accounted for?
We have to say as much as we can, if we could say we have at least half available, and then the balance would hopefully, that, I think that gives them the sense, especially since this particular leg, the design, that was completed in two to three months. So that shows our, our willingness and ability to manage it and, and get it done, you know, quicker than they expected, so.
In expeditious manner.
So I think, and we can always say that we're gonna raise the money at town meeting and make a decision when it comes time. If the price goes up or goes down, whatever it may be. We don't have to stick to what we put in, we went through this with the park grant. Kind of, to some degree. We said, we're gonna ask this at town meeting, and then we ended up withdrawing because of the restriction put on the library property, so it wasn't even financial. But, we always, it's not like we're setting it in stone. But, let's get to, you know, that letter finalized. It's gonna look a little bit interesting, because we're gonna transfer money from a highway truck, in theory, to the community center pavilion, but that's the only way to not entirely lose the ARPA funds. So.
It wouldn't be the weirdest transfer from one line to another.
No, we cannot, we'll find a good way to word it.
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good, sounds good, and, and thank you all for, for considering that.
And sorry, sorry about the mistake on ARPA funds. In hindsight, it seems pretty obvious that obligated means it's definitely going towards something. You know, in, in hindsight, it makes us, so sorry about that, but we'll, we'll get you that letter, we'll work on the letter next week.
Okay, we'll get you the numbers.
I was carrying.
Yeah, and I thought in hindsight, it makes sense. So, so here's the other thing, is I think in this account, in this case, it depends on if the trade-in, how the trade-in.
The only red flag I had was so many pickup trucks sitting on lots. They're not selling. You know, they're not selling.
But this is a signed agreement where they specified the trade-in value.
I know, but my point is where they start from. And how they get to.
A, a year twenty twenty-five model, increase fifteen percent. How can they, why would you increase a truck price fifteen percent when they're sitting on lots all around the country?
When did we sign this contract?
We did, Jim did.
Jim did.
Why would you, you know, I would ask them, what do you got in the two twenty twenty-four?
Letter she had June eighth.
Yeah, that's it.
So this, and, and this starts with the twenty-one four, and it's incredibly itemized. With all the options.
I'm getting cynical.
But you know, the thing is, this is a, you know, three-quarter ton truck that's heavy duty and ready to plow.
What do you pay for that, not three fifty, sitting over on the lot there?
Sixty-something. But that's not, I don't think that's ready to plow, it's not, this is probably this is, has the bed liner and, and the, this is including lights and everything. I mean, I think this is better than if you did it yourself, cause on the state contract. I mean, what's a half-ton pickup truck off the lot? It's like sixty-five thousand. That's for a truck that can't plow, doesn't have lights, you know, doesn't, so.
Is that a new plow on there?
I think, I think everything's new.
I don't know if it comes with a plow or if it's just plow ready. It's plow ready, yeah, yeah. I think it's plow ready, I'd be surprised if it comes with a plow, but. All right.
The whole point is that the numbers are there for us to do it.
Yeah. That's a, it's a good place, and it's better than the truck that's being outfitted, the, the plow truck that we bought the truck, but it's still getting outfitted.
Right.
Because that was partially coming from free cash, partially coming from stabilization, but still a little bit of a more messy than this.
Yeah.
Sorry, I need to take a couple notes here.
Don't be sorry.
Before we transition. This is the year of the truck.
Yeah.
The month of the truck.
Okay, that's my little Chevy love that I had back in nineteen eighties, and that was a good truck.
I learned on a F ten fifty on a column, sixteen million dollars I think for that truck.
I learned on a Willy's Jeep that was in a World War II surplus. Let me tell you.
Did you learn on Army Helen?
No, but I can tell you that if you learn on that sucker with that transmission, and you write between your house and town is a stop sign on a hill, it's like, like this kind of grade, if you can do that, you can drive anything. And not slide backwards in the car behind you.
Vehicle with the clutch is the best, uh, best.
We're pitching now, definitely, I don't think back then. Everybody. No, no, it's like, so sad, at least no American, I don't know if that's true.
Let's look at the historical commission for a minute, we're gonna appoint Cheryl Zelman.
Okay.
It's, I don't know what to do in terms of staggering, I'll take some input, because we have Barber Swan up in June of twenty-five, John Higgins up in June of twenty-seven, Rob up in June of twenty-seven. So.
Twenty-six, huh?
We could do that, or we could give her the full three. Three years, and it'll just, they'll expire in twenty-seven, but we'll give her the full three. I mean, two and a half, but we can't go three, I don't think we can go three and a half, so I think it would have been safer, so. Um, all right, well, I move that we appoint Cheryl Zelman to the historical commission
On second?
Um, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Any other questions? All right, we'll call it a go.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous and.
You're doing important, right?
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
Do, do you have to do anything specific with Susie Leon, do you have to?
As long as the town clerk has seen the resignation, it's valid. So I did forward it to him. I forwarded to Chris's email, so I'm assuming that it's, that's basically fills that requirement. We're still down a member, but, uh, we've been down a member, we have two alternates, one of the two, I think is pretty active. So.
Okay, one of you serves as actual member, one is an alternate?
They started as alternates back when, uh, we had too many numbers, we had seven people. And we can only have five on the historical commission.
Do we wanna upgrade them from alternate to?
Um, I think one is happy being alternate, and the other one doesn't. Basically doesn't show up.
Okay, there we go, never mind that.
Um, but yeah, thanks to Cheryl, and it's always good to fill open seats. So land donation, uh.
I did get something back, and I forwarded it to you. So I got a, um, the, um, the company O'Reilly Talbot and Oakham, who are out of, um, they're out of Westfordville, I think is where they are. And, um, she just got back to me just a little while ago, I just forwarded it to you. Then, is what they're going to do is, will be no more than twenty-five hundred dollars, and it's basically three tasks that they do, one is a document review, essentially what we did, gathered that information. And then they, uh, check, um, federal and state databases, historic aerial photos, things like that. Fire insurance, that's their first task, second task is to do a property visit, and the third task is what they call a red flag memorandum. Will prepare a summary of the visit, including a photo log, and confirm the presence or absence of known or suspended recognized environmental conditions. If you wanted to move forward on this tonight, I could go to my desk and. If you wanted to move forward on this tonight, I could go to my desk and print it out.
Please, yeah.
There's no soil samples in there?
They don't do that. That's what they do afterwards, after the red flag. Yeah, so they would do the, I spoke with her at length a while ago, so they wouldn't come out and do anything unless they saw something that really, you know, raised attention. Uh, raised and then they would come out and do some soil sampling and all that, so.
You know what else I thought of? If we need to dig, we'll dig and they don't dig without having some reason to leave, but you think we probably need to go to the Concom to dig.
That depend, like if they're taking surface soil samples or like within the first two inches?
Yeah, a couple of inches, I think, is all you get away with. I think if you're, I remember the ball field was like, because it was deeper than three inches.
You have to do a core.
So. If we need to dig and they recommend digging because they really suspect. are alerted, we'll do it. But I think if they don't, that seems like it's standard protocols that they don't dig unless there's a reason to to believe. So I did actually ask Dean, we've been back and forth about the negotiation. He, what he's saying, which is kind of unfortunately a lot of word of mouth, but basically everyone's in word of mouth agreement that there were no underground oil tanks.
I mean, his point was well taken, given what the water, how the proximity of lake, but also the water there. Bearing a tank would have, like, it would have been a bad idea there. So I'm glad they didn't do it because they almost certainly would have.
Soil sample either, it's gonna be sand.
I know, it's like, yeah, yeah.
I told you, you know, I have no reason to doubt him. I thought it was.
I mean, it just would have been nice to have documentation, right, but.
Boy, if the demo, and that's what they're gonna do is they're gonna look at everything we can find.
Right. And they may be able to find some documents online through like D E P or whatever that we don't easily get access to unless we do a FOIA request, like. Often they, they have a automated system for looking that stuff up and that we might not, we don't have access to it. Where we do it if we investigated it, but they already know what they're doing.
The only other thing is I can go over this few small changes in in the deed.
So I looked at it, I didn't see nothing.
It was just for the prohibition on athletic fields.
Right.
We were back and forth quite a bit about it and unfortunately when I asked Donna to define passive recreation, she said including watching a baseball game, not playing baseball, but watching a baseball game.
Sure, but you, you, sure, if they were just sitting there watching the baseball game on another property, but he's clearly doesn't want the field, so.
So it was.
Because baseball itself is a.
He said help you, but it's someone up there with a fresh scene there playing catch.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
That's fine.
We're just not, we're not gonna dig up soil.
Yeah, we're not gonna.
If someone kicks around a soccer ball because it's a park, that's what happens, but you don't.
But there's no soccer field.
Yeah.
No, you're not gonna, that's why I wrote it, you know.
Which keeps its natural integrity in some ways a lot more when you don't have a.
Oh, yeah.
Plus you have balls flying into the lake.
Well, but then I, I can understand it because you would, if you, you would have to have, you know, she would fill the parking lot up. Nobody, you know, okay, I want eight guys or eight people to play soccer, you know.
Plus, just the the turf that's required for it, the maintenance of it, a whole different, yeah, has to be absolutely flat.
There might be a liability on that part, too.
Things you have to think about.
The only thing I'm gonna, do you have any sense of if they can start immediately?
I do.
Okay, I don't. I think that's kind of what we're hoping for, but.
I can find out tomorrow.
Part of that is gonna be signed. Is there any opposition to the agreement, so twenty five hundred bucks? We'll sign up.
Do we have, where are we gonna take it from? Our, our like discussion, right?
I think so. Twenty five hundred, I think we can swing. So as far as the deed goes, um, if we're good with it, I think Dean's good with it. We're just holding off to sign it until. We're not signing it until we have the environmental.
And and he understands it how much? I mean, insofar as.
Well, I told him that the the last tipping point is environmental, so.
You bring that up in the, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And I mean, I think we're just doing due diligence. We're not necessarily expecting anything, but we wanna be able to say that we did look and there isn't.
Yeah. Okay, uh, personnel policies.
Okay, so, uh, so this week, um, Lindsay and I, hang on, I gotta find my notes. Lindsay and I had a meeting to go over, what did we do? We did, um, vacation, holidays, sick leave, and we talked about termination because of a few things that there's not any decisions we have to make on that. Um, and we talked about a few other attendance policies, a couple of other policies, but there are a number of things I, we talked about that I think we need the select board to weigh in on. So, um, a few different things. The first one in this pool is right now, we have different probationary periods for different people. But we've linked access to sick time, vacation time, um, to that probationary period. The result of which is we have a police officer with a one-year probationary period that hasn't had access to a probationary period.
Right there?
Yes.
Yeah, right.
I brought up the idea of unlinking those things so that you you accrue them from the first day of employment and you have access to them after ninety days of employment and it's separate from your probationary period. She didn't say, you're saying, well, we couldn't do that and I think that Roger and I talked about it and we think that's the way to go so that because for for a police officer, there's good reason to have a longer probation period because sometimes weird stuff happens and it doesn't happen in the first nine. But you don't necessarily need that long for everybody. Yeah.
For two separate issues.
So that was one, so.
Yeah, I totally agree. And we have different departments where where, uh, you know, fire probationary could be till the chief dean is is over, so I I I totally agree. It's a good point.
Um. All right. Vacation. We're all agreed it needs to start with two weeks, so, um, we tried to, she tried to look for comparables. Um, it's really hard to come up with real comparables. G B according to their website gives, it's kind of weird, four hours a month for a forty hour work week in the first year of employment. That turns out to be forty eight hours, which is six days if their forty hour work is an eight hour day. Um, so then between two, that's the first year, between years two and five, it's ten days, so that's two weeks. Between years five and ten, it's three weeks and between ten, ten fifteen, it's four weeks. Um, I, you know, I definitely think two weeks is like reasonable for year one and two. The question is, when does it go to three and when does it go to four? So I, I'm, Roger and I were talking about it and we're like, should it be years three, four and five that it's three weeks and then it goes up? Is it reasonable to wait to year eight to go up? And but at the end of the day, we just have to make the call.
I've got a question. Don, how many paid day, I mean, we have the paid days off holders like now for holidays.
We have fourteen.
It's thirteen, thirteen holidays.
Thirteen holidays.
Which could get a little tricky if they, some days fall on weekends or no, because then the Friday or Monday would count.
Yeah, right, so if a, if a, New Year's or holiday, it's mostly.
Christmas or New Year's.
Mostly Christmas or New Year's, but if they fall on the weekends, it's always the Friday or the Sunday.
We do, I think, basically, err on the side of more of those days and it's probably because of this history of such minimal vacation. We, we had to make up for somewhere, so I think there's a couple of holidays that some people take and others don't. I think we mostly take them. I think sometimes they're only like eleven, more like fourteen.
Some, some, if if you look at the employee manual, people can take, from what I understand, people can take a holiday if they're regularly scheduled on the day that the holiday falls. That's kind of like the employee.
Well, the problem, but kind of, I I have seen, it's definitely a little, you know, little flexibility here and there. People take some time off. They just come in the day before the holiday or the day after and they work a little extra, so. That's sense.
So Susan, you're, so we're proposing that out the gate, they start with two weeks, right?
They accrue it from day one, but they can't take any until until ninety days. The caveat to that is that, um, Roger and I also talked about, and I I think it's very true, it's very common when you start a job, you get sick within the first year. Right, like it's every kid that goes back to school brings home something and brings, it's the same situation. You're in a whole new pool of people. It's really common. I, Roger proposed ha, giving a personal day to use in that first ninety day period. Um, as a way to basically, it's an optional sick day. People don't have to use it. But at least, I I would prefer if someone actually legitimately gets sick, they not bring their sickness to work.
Well, I would rather have it be a sick day in the first.
Okay.
Because then it's like, okay, you're sick. And I think also the culture now is if you're sick, you're really sick, just stay home, we'll figure out if you're gonna work remote
Right.
or whatever, but but in general, people aren't being asked to go to work sick. Period, even if it's their third week on the job.
Right.
But we should also probably have a policy against it because you're just preventing us the worst feast scenario.
I think the one issue with personally, because the, again, the current, right, I understand, the current employee manual separates out, gives you the ability to use sick time as personal days. So the issue that I think we run into is that if we're only allowing somebody to accrue vacation and sick time in those first ninety days and not having access to it after ninety days, it's we're basically giving them a day or hours effectively in that first ninety days to take some time off if they happen to get sick or they gotta go to a doctor or something like that within the first ninety days. Because we don't, we don't allow that that accrual to happen, then we don't allow them to have access to that accrual until ninety days, so. But that was one of the reasons why I thought maybe some kind of personal days or personal hours in those first ninety days.
Does it change? I mean, I I don't have a strong opinion.
I mean, also, I don't know about our employee handbook, but where I work, going going to a doctor's appointment that couldn't be scheduled outside of, you know, workouts, you can put in for sick time.
Yeah, yeah.
So if it's sick time, I feel like that is, and if someone's sick, like, yeah, I think a day in the first ninety days.
So and so we're going with the, uh, one sick day in the first ninety days. Okay.
And you could also, our our system actually allows for negatives. Yeah, so you could take, you know, it's just, it's just plain, plain, you know, trying to pay that that was adequate. You could actually take a sick day and it would just be negative and then as the accruals came in, it would go against it, so.
But if you got hired and you started not, not showing up, me in the first couple of months and it was X, Y and Z, we would point to the employee handbook and say.
Right, and plus, if you're not showing up, that you're like, that your supervisors are gonna be, eh, this isn't working. You either gotta show up or create a plague. Um, all right, so that's sick leave.
I'm not bent out of shape over exactly how the vacation progresses, but I would think people turn over jobs pretty quickly these days. It's not like however many years ago and people would work one job.
Right. Yeah, it's pretty rare.
Um, so I would say the, you know, those, the ones that you write off, like, start at two, go to three after three years. Three years and then go to.
After three years or in your third year of employment?
I would say.
I I just have to be.
I would say the end of the third year.
And in the third, you start for year four of employment. Okay, and go, and then when's the next?
Eight years.
Okay, four weeks from your age.
If you're a teacher, you get a sabbatical after seven years.
Yeah, so that's after five years, so those three, so three.
Professor, I don't think they give sabbaticals to like.
Yeah, to attend your professor.
Um.
But you get a half sabbatical after three.
Okay, so the next one up is we, um, and Roger floated this idea and I like it. Um, for using a paid time off concept for part-time workers, right? We, Frank and I did the, I guess technically it's Frank and I, Scott and I started it, but for part-time people get, now get sick. And Roger quoted that if we made it paid time off, then it's their option to use it.
Todd, I have no problem with that.
I mean, I, I.
You're paying them for things that are time, you know, part of it, that's what they earn. It's gonna be some, it's gonna be a minimal amount, anybody did, you know.
And, you know, for, because we now have to think about how other workers will think of things. I would point out that the part-timers accruing that leave at a rate of one hour for every thirty hours, whereas full-time employees accrue a rate of one hour for every seventeen point four hours of work. And, um, you know, that's a pretty big difference. Plus, they get, plus the full-time employees get both sick time and vacation time accruing and the part-time ones do not. So really, it it's a much bigger benefit for the full-time people and they have no loss.
Is there a, um, so is it actually, I can't remember, you could say it, is it, it's in that employee handbook, but it's thirty hours, one hour for thirty hours? Is there a way to, that doesn't make any sense to make it proportional to what the, um, to what the, um, full-time, make full-time worker is, so.
I know, what we did was we went with what the Mass Law requires.
Yeah, because making it proportional actually wouldn't actually be better. Because if, for example, if you had a ten-hour week employee and they would be, uh, that would be, what's that, what's ten divided by forty, whatever that number is.
Four.
Yeah, so they would actually, the 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 sick time or vacation or P T O or whatever would be based on that as opposed to thirty hours. I don't know.
I think what we're doing is that they're, so currently, the way it works is you get one and a quarter days, and by the way, we're also switching to be consistently all in hours. You can take the things in hours. So it doesn't make sense, right? So it would be, you get ten hours per month for a full-time employee. As it happens, I think all our full-time employees are working a forty-hour week, I think, or do some of them.
Uh, I think they all, no, they all work.
They all work forty hours.
Yeah.
So, um, they're accruing ten hours for a hundred and sixty hours. I did the calculation though. I, so you were suggesting having them be the same, which we could do, but that wasn't what we.
No, I know, it was just, I was just thinking about it. It's more proportional, so if, if, um, I I don't know how that worked. I have to figure out on the one hour for every thirty hours.
Which was what the Mass Law requires. So what we did was we went with the Mass Law.
Yeah, so if you went proportionally.
The town's more generous than that for their.
So we, you were saying it was ten hours or a hundred and sixty hours per month?
Ten hours per month, yeah. I mean, it's probably not technically a hundred and sixty hours, because months are not exactly twenty workdays.
So it'd be, it'd be more like, uh, I don't know, I can't think like that in my head right now. I gotta write it down.
We have, we have to actually calculate this.
But anyway.
But.
I get what you're saying.
I don't know. Do we wanna leave it as it is or do we wanna make them comparable? I know you don't wanna.
It's about sick time for part-time employees. Yeah, benefits for part-time employees and kind of all.
Yeah, so we, that, we can. You wanna think about that?
Yeah, I wanna think about that.
Yeah, I don't blame you. I wanna think about it too and I wanna make some.
I thought of making the P T O those.
Yeah, we're okay with P T O though. Okay, so we talked about probation, unlinking it from sick or vacation time. We talked, we came up with the years for the vacation, paid time off and, uh, sick day, eight hours of available in first ninety days for new employees. I think that completes all the important questions that we had, um, for today.
Okay. On that note, um, Collin Center, I did go back and look at the agreement. And technically it ends in the end of December. I think as long as they bill us and we pay them, they might not even know that it ends in December. Because this was really not a project-based agreement.
How long did they just go to the rate?
Well, Collin, if they operate, you know, town council, they don't do rate increases. We just sign an agreement letter. Well, if they operate, you know, town council, they don't do rate increases. We just sign an agreement letter. Or maybe we didn't even, you know, years ago. It's not to say they won't, but.
Well, that then.
But here's, here's, here's.
They don't even normally have contracts.
They normally do, do you want us to do your employee handbook or hire your town administrator? Or hire your highway superintendent? And then they do that project for a fee and that's what it is. So should I just leave it alone?
I would.
Okay.
I would leave it alone.
Yeah, really. But I so I'm meeting with her next week. We're gonna do a bunch more and she's gonna have.
The means I thought we were doing it all.
Oh, so. Um, they're an eastern ass.
Yeah.
The technology does have some useful things and that's all. By the way, how many employees do we have that can actually work remotely? Is it just you?
That can or have.
Yeah, that are able.
Well, it depends on what you define. I mean, look at Don Torrico. He has his laptop and his phone and assessors need to go out and do. Field work is really remote. I don't know, but Don's talking about getting an iPad. Field work.
I guess I meant when I talk for work remotely, if you're sick, you can still do your job at home.
Yeah, entirely.
You could do a bunch of it if the call's forwarded to you.
Sure.
But who, but really, like, the library workers can do that. Transportation, yeah, highway can.
The only person, the only person I can think of right now might be like, uh. Or Catherine only because she's like, maybe she can answer her emails.
Right.
But she can't, everything she does.
She could work the phone or the email, but she couldn't go in person anywhere.
Couldn't go in person. Yeah. I think it's a little bit of a gray line though, because Don basically doesn't need to come in here other than to have office hours.
Right.
Technically, yeah.
But he does come in for a couple of.
He comes in, he's scheduled, he's scheduled from four thirty to six twice a week.
Right. Yeah. Which I think he needs to do.
Should you guys paperwork done?
Uh, no, his paperwork, sometimes a visit one-on-one.
Yeah, he meets with people quite often. In the summertime, a lot of people.
Yeah, clears up a lot of stuff.
Um, okay, the next agenda item is just the review of town administrator. I sent out the form from last year. I asked Donna last year, she compiled all the forms in a composite summary, which allows us to. Discuss the evaluation as a board with you. I think the way that we did it last year works well. It's pretty much what's recommended if you talk to town councilor or HR. And, uh, we can't go into executive session, not allowed. That is what it is, right? Um, but what we can do is each fill out the form, meet with Roger individually, go over our own. Talk and go have our own conversation. And then Donna will produce a composite evaluation so we can. Uh, have the conversation as a board too.
Sure, yeah.
But it makes it less like. About one individual relationship and more about the whole picture while also abiding by the open meeting law, because if. I compiled it or Susan compiled it or Frank compiled it or you compiled it.
Right.
Well, you compiled it, I guess.
Well, the process we had last year worked. It was a good process.
Yeah, the only alternative is the system TV uses, which is that.
The chair.
That they actually have a conversation in a public meeting. With a with a town administrator.
Which I think we will do, but with the composite evaluation.
Oh, it's true. I never asked what the value.
Did we really?
But I mean, I think in in a open meeting, you could share those documents, but then they become.
Exactly. So all we're doing is it just takes some of the.
Some of the.
Personal and not even that.
And I wasn't actually proposing it. I was just saying that it it takes some of the personal, you know, there's three members of the board, takes some of the personality out of it.
And it makes it more like, all right, the board is whole and the town administrators are having a conversation. Um, so the only question I have about that is if we're all on board with that. Um, I think Donna did a good job with the composite summary last year and she was quick. We could go to Collins Center, but. I think I'll just go with.
If the name broke.
Um, the only question is when. The only question is when, uh, I put some, a date in there, but it's arbitrary. It doesn't need to happen by then. If you're like, oh, I'm going out of town for.
What's the date on that?
Um, December eighteenth, so that's next Thursday. If we want more time with them. The, well, here's also how I'd see it, right? Is we probably wouldn't have a discussion as a whole for until the twenty-fourth of the, the, that week or the following week. But we submit them so she can get started on it.
We submitted directly to Donna.
Yeah. And in the meanwhile, we have individual meetings with Roger whenever.
Right.
Yeah, like usually Mondays are, I don't work on Mondays. So it'd probably be Monday, like I usually come in. Um, but this would get it to Donna so she can compile it. Um, does that date work for people?
I don't see why not.
I've got a lot of time this one.
Do you have time this week?
Yeah, yeah, you have time.
I'm just wondering if someone told me like Susan is going to Ireland from now until the nineteenth, then we would.
Yeah, I.
Thursday the nineteenth, right, yeah.
And then.
I can do it.
Because we all meet. I know Frank, he usually on.
Tuesday, I'm wandering around too.
Yeah, same thing, Susan, you.
Yep.
Or you do Monday, you wander in, Tuesday.
Yeah. If you want to do the following, I don't know if I could do it next Tuesday because I'm meeting with Lindsay at eleven thirty. We have to be pretty quick.
Yeah, we could set up a time. It's just, yeah, the following Tuesday is Christmas Eve too, so that.
Oh, my God. Christmas Eve. Yeah, sure. That's a great day for that now.
Yeah. Rich. All right, so you all have the form, right? Now, I just don't know, is there a form that I fill out?
Yeah, you know what? That is.
What did you send it to me? I didn't send it.
It's the same thing.
Oh, it's the same one?
So.
You get a self-evaluation, you should do the same.
Okay.
Because part of the thing is.
Do I send that or do I keep that myself?
You should. So you should submit it to Donna. And also when we have our meetings with you, actually we'll exchange them. So we're not gonna show up to our meeting and buy inside you like, here's our thing. But exchange them, I would, you'd sub, you'd make one, but then send it individually to each of us. We'll each do one. Then we'll meet. Donna will compile it.
So I should just plan on submitting mine after, uh, by the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. That's the way we've done. I think it makes sense for you to do it before you've heard or before.
Yeah.
So that we get, what, how you feel things are.
Yeah, yeah.
Not like, how did we tell you?
Exactly. And it's an opportunity to see if you feel like you're on track or not as, not where you'd like to be in the same places that we're.
No, that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay. How are the other, like, what's going on with the other departments? Because I noticed the press conference is supposed to be done by the seven fifteen.
Well, I think we're gonna, I have to get through this little budget tweak a little. I have to get that out and then I was gonna start working on that with the, with the, try to get something done by the middle of January.
Yeah, I was, I told Roger, I thought middle of January is probably good.
Yeah.
Two years ago, we were more like January, February. Last year we did November, December fifteenth deadline. Um. Roger, what you might do is even if you can't get to your direct reports, get it, get the form out to Brian and Sean.
To do the, yeah.
And I don't know, so they can do their own at their own pace. If they, if there's two, three snowstorms in a week. You know, it's just good so they have time with it. Um. And if you have questions, Roger, I think about who. Does which people just ask.
Yeah.
I showed you the organizational chart. There are some gray areas. So in the past, here's a funny one. The council on aging, I asked, oh, did you do it last year with Melissa and Lynn? And she said, no, we actually didn't do it last year. So somehow that we got to help. But in general, I think if there was someone at the ConCon agent, the chair of ConCon and you do it then. Same thing with council on aging. Highway and fire and police are straightforward as far as the structure. Don Torrico is gonna do them with his electrical plumbing for the first time. This last time we went to do it, they said, actually, wait a minute, we don't work under the building commissioner. We made a bylaw to change this and now they do it. So.
Don and Don Clausen would do.
Don will do Linda. The board of assessors will do Don. So those are ones that you can.
I just gotta sit in on while they do.
No, just they'll just do it and they'll give you the completed form.
So is that the same thing? Oh, but the.
Just because they're elected.
The council on aging is.
Appointed.
Is appointed.
Yeah. So they're under our.
Yeah, yeah, charter.
Yeah. So if someone's under our chart. And they they have a supervisor who's like a full-time employee, that supervisor will just do it. But if their supervisor is the chair of the volunteer committee, you'll go in as well. More or less. And if you have questions, you can look at what was done last year or ask them.
Um, so the update on the town clerk's office, um, I did, um, I did reach out to, um. Uh, Chris, actually, your agenda today was a chemo day, so I wasn't quite certain which way to go. Sometimes he emails me, I email him, but. On this first week, I've been sort of reaching out to her just in case. And, uh, but I did ask a question about, um. Gary Shaw coming in and he's like, whatever we have to do. So, okay, whatever we need to do to, um, to, um. Is fine with Gary. And, um, so if Gary wanted to come in a few days, a few hours, a couple of days a week or however it's worked out. Chris is fine with that.
So I saw Gary today and I said that we would like to pay him for what he's doing as assistant town clerk. Um, and also would he be interested in doing some office hours? Because they've been very intermittent if happening at all. And he said, yes. And I said, long term. And he said, well, he's going away in March. But I said that. You know, at least.
It gives us a team mindset. Yeah.
So I, I threw around four or six hours. I like that, the idea of that because it still leaves Chris time to come in as he is able to and wants to. If we. Hire Gary for all of Chris's hours, then then that eliminates.
Right.
And Chris is still the town clerk, so, um.
And there's some things, as I recall, Gary said he didn't know how to do.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be limited.
Right, limited suite of options.
Limited options, yeah. So I, I think like one thing recently he didn't know how to do, but he spent some time to figure out.
Yeah, yeah. So he's, he's been working on things like, uh, uh, he had to actually coordinate with Chris to do things like the, um. Uh, birth certificate, death certificate, marriage licenses. He's, uh, figured out that. And, uh, it's kind of where we're at. One day at a time as he comes in and figures something out. Um, the next thing, hopefully, hopefully Chris can help out, uh, will be available is the census is coming up. And then dog licenses are kind of with the census usually. So those are like, luckily it's slow. It's kind of a slow season right now. So that's about it.
The only thing I wanna confirm is we're saying, I think, six hours and. As far as rate, I think Gary has a rate that he works the elections and whatnot at.
So, yeah, for the elections, it was normal, normally he's just a election. There's, there's three levels of people at the election. There is the election worker, there's the, um, warden, there's the warden, yeah, the counters. And Gary, from what I understand, this last election is a worker. So they make fifteen bucks an hour, then eighteen and then. Twenty-five or something. I can't remember what it is. Chris currently makes twenty-six dollars an hour. The last time I went back and looked, because they actually, uh. Chris suggested I go back and look and see what Gary was making when he was working as an assistant in the town clerk's office. It was like fourteen dollars and change.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, so whatever it was back then. So, um, um, you know, whether it's twenty or twenty-two or fifteen or whatever, you know, we got the, we got the funds for it right now.
Yeah.
So just have to make the decision on what it is.
Do we need to make a decision on what it is?
Yeah.
I think we do. Um.
I think, I mean, he's an assistant town clerk. He's not a full-time clerk and he doesn't have all the training and background, but I think like twenty dollars an hour at least.
Yeah.
And then we'll save for six hours a week and this is gonna be temporary. Um, in the sense that if Chris. Kind of come back to work, then he will and then we won't have the budget to pay it.
When Chris comes back to work.
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, next thing, administrative assistant hiring.
So I can tell you. Frank is, Frank has assisted me and helped with some invoices, so he has some training. So, uh, I expect to see you on Thursday. Now, I haven't gotten any.
And I've got, you got some.
Are you gonna do Frank's review?
I'll be doing Frank's review, uh, later on. And also, um. I actually have Nancy Cleven coming in and she's actually going to be helping me. Really just kind of organize and really look at the office, the town administrator's office and how it is. With, um, like filing, where things are, sort of the best way to kind of look at it that way. She doesn't necessarily, I may. End up showing her how to do invoices. She's been doing invoices over at the community center, helping them out over there. Um, she doesn't necessarily wanna sit right up front because, you know, she doesn't want people to come in and ask her questions that she doesn't know. And so that's where I am with her and the current two people.
I don't know. I can do the invoices for.
Yeah, we'll figure it all out. Yeah.
And then.
Um, I can forward it that.
Yeah.
I don't think we can forward it.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think that's the reality. Um, I.
I think it raises parity issues as much as anything.
Oh, I mean, if twenty-two did.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Pitchforks are becoming.
I just think of that a lot. I did buy the argument.
Yeah. The one thing I didn't know is if we would match them all though. But yeah, it's still high.
The parity issue. So then, and I don't blame her for wanting it. It's her time.
It's okay to ask.
Right, yeah.
But I think that then, you know, then you're looking at those kinds of numbers and what with the next budget coming up, we're gonna have a lot of those kind of people and you're saying, why?
Yeah, yeah. No, I agree. I agree. I was not, I was a little calm card.
No, I, I, it's part of the process, you know, they have to make decisions, we have to make decisions.
Yeah, it's.
It's okay to ask. Also, okay, you're saying no. You know, it's nothing. That's your shot.
I mean, we can just say we can't afford to go that high. We don't have.
We're on budget.
Yeah.
So I think the next question is posting back, ooh, I have one other lead. Um, that might fit in the mix, but maybe we just wanna post again. I would personally avoid the Collins Center on this particular matter. Have resumes go to Roger. There's someone. There's the assistant town clerk in San Antonio that might be interested, but she can just go through the same processes. And every, I thought about asking as far as town clerk's, I was supposed to, thankfully Gary's willing to do it. Um, so. Um.
That's not Lori, is it?
No, no, no. Um. But I guess we're back out to posting.
Yeah, I think we're out to posting. Um, I mean.
We'll just post the same job, same rate.
And immediately we're vetting it. We'll have some people.
Well, I think, I think we should say like. We posted it so many times, given people a chance. If they really wanted it, I feel like we should be kind of interviewing. I don't think we need to give a long time period to wait. And then by the time you go to hire someone, they already have a different job.
Yeah.
So it's like interviewing at least a preliminary phone screening kind of almost immediately and then interviewing shortly thereafter.
We can do rolling applications until the position is filled. We don't, you know. And, you know, if you get someone that's good, just like, and if you don't, you just go on to the next one. Um, just gotta remember to take it down.
I know, yeah. I think the good thing is though, is this is, we'll be putting back out for, what is it? Was it fourteen hours?
Four, uh, fourteen, yeah. Eighteen, sixteen, yeah, fourteen. Yep.
So that I like, I did not really like the idea of splitting it up. It was kind of a short-term, put a plug in a hole.
I mean, I think the idea that there might be people who are just wanting a few hours isn't a bad idea ultimately. I think that the, the idea we had to. Do the court and that position and make it full-time, maybe in this hiring environment, I, and I know why you have some reservations, but. I feel like in this hiring environment, offering benefits, maybe that he's a full-time job and benefit. You know, we used to argue there's lots of people that want part-time work. Well, they're not banging our door down for any of the part-time jobs. It's not like there's this wealth of talent begging to take that part-time job at twenty bucks an hour or whatever. So. You know, if we can't pay sixty bucks an hour, I don't think we're gonna have this, a deep pool. And we can't, and nor do I think we should. It's just, just be like.
So we'll back out to post the original job. I think it's also gonna become a budget discussion shortly about what we want to talk about next year. We'll see. We already signed the letter to the firefighters.
I mean, we, I I dropped the letter.
Yeah.
For our, and. Roger looked at it, and I don't know if you guys, I mean, we had it, I have an e copy if you want any changes. Lori did reach out to us about what's going on with that. Do you have an answer to that question?
I think that we should post it and have resumes go to Roger.
Okay, I'm I'm fine with that, but.
I don't think we ought to involve the Collins.
Collins Center, I think it's too slow and too remote.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that.
And if unless she would rather get the resumes and screen people, then you should get the resumes and screen people. And then interview with. With. Her, Lori and.
I was thinking of collecting, I was thinking of collecting the resumes and passing them off to her, just so it goes like a centralized.
Right, right. So I'll go to you and then they get delivered in.
Right. It comes out on email, and then I'll just pass it off to that to screen and make the decisions, you know, so that we can just sort of see how things are. And then. I was asked to also do a letter of. Gratitude to the highway department for their work during the most recent snowstorm, as well as the drawdown. And he's been helping. Pretty well, pretty much with the drawdown as well. And they actually had to go make a little twist today to. Open it up a little bit because of the weather.
Well, wait till tomorrow, because it's worse.
I know, it's supposed to be like an inch or two rain or something like that tomorrow. So I'll get that to them.
December. Um, it does raise the question of, I I think that. We're gonna need to look at at least the those three positions for like, I don't know what K parity, but. The administrative assistant, the MCC position, and.
Council on Aging.
The council on aging position. I, it's like having poked at this a little bit, I mean, I, it just needs to be on our agenda that we're gonna look at during maybe. Part of the process of the looking at both the. What they think the position is at the MCC and what the what the other two positions really involve. Having hooked around at some of the other senior centers. The variability in what their responsibilities are is significant.
Yeah.
From one place to another.
Lennox's hiring, like, accounts on aging or senior center or community center.
They have a.
Right now.
They have, they have.
But it's very different, it's very different.
It's very, I mean, that's the thing, they really vary than what the expectations are of the jobs. Yeah, that's what I mean, they're really, they can be very different. Barrington has a full time director with two people under her boat. That basically, she's also got twenty volunteers that are regular volunteers, and it's the volunteers that run most of the social events. The two people plus her are mostly doing what amounts to COA work, connecting people with social services, transportation. That kind of stuff. Most of their hours are dedicated to that. And it's a much bigger population. So.
I think also, it's not really a surprise, wages have been like inflating as much as inflation.
Yeah.
Or more, and. In some ways, the municipality is slow, but this is really, wages have grown drastically in just the last few years, so. It wouldn't be surprising if we see some positions that need to go up.
Yeah, no, it would.
And it's gonna be a very relatively small impact on the budget, because those three positions are, I'm like thirty hours a week.
Twenty, twenty, twenty-four. Yeah, yeah.
Right.
So.
Twelve and twelve.
Yep.
Oh, oh, plus the, plus that, yeah, so.
That being said, what are we for posting with community center job, because. We were limited by the budget.
Yep.
Now we have a short period of time where we have no one getting paid. Well, who knows? Hopefully, short period of time, we're not gonna get paid. So we have some flexibility.
How much flexibility we have is gonna depend on how long that time works.
Yeah, so.
Well, it's likely did when he came in, you know, you know, we can say July first, it can be asked. Yeah. Far to here, but July first, because this is the way the budget works.
Well, for the posting, we won't say release July first, right? We'll just say.
I think we posted it at the same.
Yeah.
Because looking at, my current understanding of the responsibilities, coordinator is really about it.
Yeah.
Not, there's, you know, they're not, he's not supervised, he wasn't supervising anybody. The grants that he wrote were small, non competitive grants. I mean, I'm not trying to downplay the value of it. I'm just trying to, it is what it is. I'm trying to give it. Make comparable assessments.
I think it's tough, too, because I think it's one of those positions where if you live next door.
Yeah.
And you're kind of on call twenty-four seven, but can. Pop down because someone forgot to lock the door, can't remember the code or.
Right, or the AD is opening up or whatever.
Yeah, then it's one job. But if you live. Further away, it's it's a different job.
Yeah, you can't, those things don't, you just can't do those things. And we're ten hours a week, right?
It's. It's. It's a tricky one.
It really is. And or maybe the expe, if the person isn't from town, the expectation of of that might have to be different. There might have to be. A volunteer that runs it and does that, that's a community member.
What I want, what I might do, though, is the the one woman in San Antonio, she, I guess, used to do program at Berkshire South. Community Center. So I might say, here's the ad for that if you're. I don't know. Last time we hired for it, it was pretty competitive.
Yeah, we had Lori.
Right.
And we had other people in like a first pool.
I mean, it could be a really hard job.
She's full time in San Antonio.
Oh, she is?
Yeah, she's full time in San Antonio. She won't, she. Doesn't have.
She wanted, she wanted benefits, which is a big enough.
She would, that's it. She would.
She was, yeah. Okay. Are there any town administrator updates?
Yes, quick things here, about three. We were visited by OSHA, the other, last week. It actually, the reason why is because Jim's accident and just recently, and because of the fact that he's on workers comp. And OSHA is state now, Massachusetts has been in OSHA state since twenty twenty-two. And so. They came out, a gentleman came out and interviewed me and Pete Wilson, the foreman. And we went down, I went down with the the person from OSHA down to the place where it happened. He thought it was very interesting, not that the fact that Jim was injured, but the whole premise and how it happened and how it. Sort of relates to OSHA, he saw very interesting, because it wasn't a bridge inspection. So if it had been a bridge inspection, there's all sorts of steps that were taking place. It was essentially, it was basically. Us taking responsibility for the bridge, which is what we're supposed to do as a community, doing maintenance. And so that's like a whole different thing. And so he was going to go back and try and figure out how that works with OSHA and generate a report and get back. I don't think there's gonna be any fines or anything. I think there may be some training or something like that that takes place based upon my conversation with him. And it's just, all it really ends up, I guess, is there's like a little blemish on the town of Monterey because OSHA came in. So that's kind of what that, what he's, what he said to me. He spent, I spent about an hour with him. And Pete spent about an hour with him as well. So Pete spent, Pete met with him privately. And they went over what it was.
Has he talked to Jim?
I haven't heard that yet. He was, he's supposed to talk to Jim, but I haven't heard whether he has or hasn't. I gave him Jim's contact information. And. So at that, at that point in time, he hadn't spoken with him. So. So that's what's happening there. Third, second is. Received this from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Office of the Governor, in honor of the town of Monterey, presented by. Representative Smitty Pignatelli with appreciation of your support during my twenty-two years of service. We were given a flag. That was actually flown over the state Capitol. So I will present this to, I was thinking I would present this to Chief Faye. To replace the flag that's out front, because it's looking a little worn out there. So if that makes sense to you, that's what I'll, that's what I'll do with it.
While you're at it, I don't know who's in charge of that flag, but I know. I think my father at the library said he just gets a new one every six months.
Oh, really?
It's about the lifespan.
Yeah, that's, wow, it's pretty worn out there.
Even the heavy duty ones, because they're just out now.
Yeah, it's true.
Yeah, I'll look into that. Does he get some more special?
I don't know. I don't know, but.
There's probably, I was just thinking, actually, when your son's like, I wonder who makes that, that's like a.
And last.
Are they made in America?
Yeah.
Probably not, because they beat five times the bread.
Yeah. So. Yesterday, Robert Krupski, our plumbing and gas inspector, came because he had been at a a training. At the for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Provisional Licencings for Plumbing and Gas. And was told that we, that the state is requiring that he technically be appointed. And that this. The section of the form is to be filled out by the state municipal appointing authority, so us, I guess, would be filled out. I haven't actually filled it out yet. Submitted to him, so he is officially appointed. He's so that he's officially appointed and that he has an appointing letter. He needs that.
Yeah.
He said he hasn't, he hasn't been appointed in years.
Well, that's not really true.
He doesn't get a letter issued.
Well, that's not even really true either. I'm. Good question. I mean, he absolutely should be appointed. Let me just see where where I was. Well, you want to do it for, I sent it to Krupski.
Does he email us?
Well, does he have? I sent it to a Gmail account that I thought was his, but I will send it now to you. But we appointed him not only as plumbing inspector, but also as. Gas inspector.
Recently, right?
The appointment letter is June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, and the gas appointment is through. It's for one year through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and the plumbing is two years for June, until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. So the problem. Well, actually, for a lot of people, it works very well, but. Mostly appointment letters, I just email out as long as I have people's email. If I don't, I'll hand deliver it or mail it or something, but. Some, I think I've gotten, you know, from that address before.
I'll, I'll just, I'll print it out. And then all it needs is this. Needs to be signed by.
Yeah, so I used it because I had an email before from him from, at that email, so.
So I I just add all the contact information, the town hall and the admin email at this.
If he comes in again.
Yeah.
And you want to print out those two letters.
I'm going to, because he'll probably be in tomorrow.
Yeah. Those two letters. And ask if he has a good email. Or if that one's good.
And that is, that's it, that's it for me.
Any unanticipated business? There are a couple of things. You know, I want to be honest.
We, we didn't ask.
Okay, so Courtney Morehouse reached out about this grant. I went forward this.
The phase two or the phase three?
About a different thing, a protect grant funding. They're looking for ready for construction projects.
So that would be.
In Western Mass to bundle.
Okay.
To get federal highway pro- protect grant funding. However. We have heard that federal highway funds will likely require Mass DOT to be involved in project management to some extent. We are not entirely sure whether this means they'll simply have it on their list, or if they would be required to manage it completely. So some towns might not want to let it go of project control, while others might welcome it as one less thing to worry about. And Courtney's wondering and needs to know by December twentieth. If we should include the list. And I think more or less we'll talk to Jim and just defer to his opinion, but I'm all for. Getting federal funding for the culvert that's.
Yeah, if the, if the federal funding exists.
I bet you that's what, you know, Dennis and I went to Pittsfield about four weeks ago, it was about federal money.
Yeah, that's all in the current administration.
So with this.
Yeah, but I think some of that money is set aside. I don't, you know, there's things you can do, but I don't think it'd be one of them. You know, as it was pointed out in the meeting, the eastern side of the state's gotten a billion dollars.
Right.
We haven't gotten anything here. But when you look at the paperwork required for it. You know, you only see a full time person. It's like, I spent time doing the fire stuff and it was a thirteen page questionnaire.
What fires?
You know, what you get on the, this federal fire thing.
The AFG?
I don't know. One day it was something to do, I have to go back and look where it was.
When?
This was about a month ago. Dennis and I went to Pittsfield where a state representative came out and talked about giving federal dollars. For. Grants from the grants. And a lot of people from the small, I don't remember exactly who they were growing up. We don't, we don't have the staff to do what you do.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm leaning, if they want to come in and do the culvert and pay for it, then they should be able to.
I I agree with you. If the DOT wants to manage it, I'd let them manage it.
Provided that their management of it doesn't result in this road being closed and a weird detour for four years.
Well, I think the way we've talked about it has to be one lane.
Right.
And we can't do a detour.
I mean, if it was as we discussed the project, and as we planned the project in phase two, then.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's gonna be engineered, purged in that way.
Right, then.
So they're gonna have to go with the plan. It's just you give up a little bit of agency, but.
But if it's worth, if it's a plan we've already agreed on and return for getting federal funds.
I might tell Courtney that this law court likes the idea.
Right. I still think it's worth talking to Jim, but.
Yeah, no, and and Jim was on the email, too.
Right.
So if he has reservations, we should consult him, but. It's, the deadline is in ten days.
Yeah, so it requires a rapid response.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't, I sent out both sets to minutes today, so if we're not ready, we're not ready.
Oh, yeah, I prepared them both. Yeah, I didn't have, I, that's three row with no comment. Dude, you're wrong.
Just wait till. Just wait till it's a month later, no one remembers what happened.
Yeah, that's it. Maybe I just don't remember. But this one even had something that, you know, was sort of paraphrased something I said, and that's usually where I'd be. I was like, no, that's fine.
So make a motion to accept the.
Where were they, the minute?
October twenty-second and November sixth.
I'll second.
And we'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes, and they're immensely approved. So. In the next couple of weeks, Roger, I know you're working on the budget thing, we'll be working on our reviews. Everyone should have that document. If for some reason you lose it, just email me. Send it back to you. Those go directly to town council. We're gonna be posting new jobs. If it was like December. Um, if it was like December twenty-fourth, then I would do what Mary says and wait till after the holidays, but I think let's just post them.
Do, do we have to do anything with the thing you, Roger, just sent about the Seaford community, I don't think we do, this doesn't require action unless we want to not. We might have to vote on accepting it in in May, but I don't think we use any.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
All good, we'll meet next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Then it's, oh, we might as well talk about it now, if we haven't, what are we gonna do when it's, you know, New Year's and Christmas and whatever?
Oh, right.
Because it's, so the Tuesday is, I'd really rather not meet on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth.
Our next two Tuesdays are.
I know, the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first.
Um, I don't care about thirty-first, but it's not, it's probably not. So what if, we could switch to Mondays for those two weeks, we could switch to Thursdays, we could do one or the other. We don't need to think that far in advance, but I think it's helpful, because if if we go to Monday, the twenty-third and Monday, the thirtieth, those will need to be posted on Thursday.
I'm working Mondays.
Yeah, I'm planning the Monday too, I was gonna say that, I'm planning the Monday.
I think let's keep going, because we have a slate of things, we have a couple of things that are wrapping up at the end of the year.
Right.
So let's just plan on next Tuesday, the uh, seventeenth, and then Monday, the twenty-third, Monday, the thirtieth.
Yep.
All right.
I'm actually changing my calendar.
I'm making notes in the. Close out, go home.
Second, all right, we'll, we'll vote on it. I.
Yeah.
Unanimous vote to adjourn the meeting, the time is seven fifty-four P M.
It's a pleasure, gentlemen.